... United States of America, you to the Republic for exchange, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have Mayor Benler. Attorney General looking for a motion. Don't you approve?
Second.
Motion by Val, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council workshop report. This is a two twenty-four fourteen Hampton City Council workshop. The Hampton City Council held a workshop at six P. M. in the city council chambers. Members present: Hogback, Davies, Crowley, Lipid, Smire, and Harms, Addison Hickman. Also present were Mayor Benler, City Manager Ron Dunn, Public Works Director Doug Tarr, Police Chief Bob Schaefer. There were roughly twenty members of the public in attendance. The following residents addressed the council: Gary Brinkley, Judy Van Raden, Clarence Stewart Riggins, Dan Rodemeyer, Lou Rodemeyer, Rich Huthback, Steve Everman, and Bob Schaefer. All of those addressing the council indicated that they had either had water service lines freeze or have had running or have been running a continual stream of water from a faucet as the city has recommended, reducing the risk of freezing. Some thanked the mayor for his efforts to contact them to make sure they were aware of local assistance being offered. They also requested the council to consider making adjustments to water bills to compensate for the excess usage. They suggested averaging recent water bills and using the average for computing amount owed. Doug Tarr indicated that there have been approximately thirty reported frozen lines. The council then discussed the pros and cons of making the requested adjustments. Mayor Benler pointed out to all in attendance that although the city is not responsible for the water service lines from the water main to the water meters, the city has empathy for citizens affected by extreme winter conditions and the effects of the water lines. He explained that the city of Hampton has limited options, and he praised the efforts of the community reaching out to those in need. For example, the Church of the Living Word and Franklin Wellness Center have opened their doors for showering and laundry facilities to the public. Ron Dunn explained that some communities have not made adjustments and some have agreed to make adjustments to water bills through an averaging process. He cautioned the council that if they considered offering some sort of adjustment, he recommended that citizens who are affected should be required to contact City Hall to be placed on a list of eligible recipients. He also pointed out that the public would need to understand that this is an extreme situation and they shouldn't expect adjustments for other unrelated water usage increases such as broken or running toilets, et cetera. He indicated that information obtained from the Mesa City Engineer estimated approximately four hundred thirty-two gallons of water would come from running a pencil width stream of water from one faucet. There are varying testimonials of the amounts of water running from different faucets. After much discussion, the consensus of the council was to have staff draft a proposal to adjust the water bills based on recent average usage, and only customers contacting the City Hall will be eligible for the adjustment. Ron will attempt to have a proposal on the February twenty-seventh agenda. If it is not ready, it will be considered a march to the district council meeting. In other business, Ron gave an update on the sponsored project application process. He hopes to have applications submitted by February twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen. Ron indicated that he has contacted Congressman Steve King's office and visited with Senator Charles Grassley about the EPA Buy American regulation that is causing wastewater treatment plant project delays. He has had good response from each office and hopes that it results in a positive turn of events to get the project back on track. Ron explained that the EMC meeting last week was canceled due to weather and has not been rescheduled. Mayor Benler expressed frustrations with a recent email he had received from the EMA coordinator that effective immediately, no more information will be disseminated to EMC board members prior to meetings because some have shared information that was not intended to be shared. Mayor Benler hoped that the EMC would understand that board members need to have information ahead of meetings in order to be prepared to make decisions that have an impact on their constituency. Not providing information prior to meetings will only delay the decisions or prolong the process. Doug indicated that the council will be considering a resolution on Thursday's council meeting authorizing the submission of a T-CENT grant application seeking grant funds for the replacement of the traffic signals at the intersections of Highway three and First Street and Highway three and Highway sixty-five. Ron stated that he is still waiting for the structural engineers' report of the condition of the current East Wald Library. The workshop concluded at seven twenty-two P. M.
Oh, a quick question. Is that four hundred thirty-two gallons that's in a twenty-four hour period?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready for public comments. There are none registered any events. Anybody wishing to speak?
I will. Um, I don't know if I can stand back here. Go ahead and film up there. Please, please film the podium. Lisa Slider, um, on behalf of Pumpkinhead Diner, seven oh nine Central and West Hampton. Our water froze, I think, two weeks ago. Is that correct? Bobby Harmon came and unfroze it with his welder and also, I think, a couple back here. And, um, since then, we've had to have a continuous flow of water. I was told that there would be some sort of... This is why we're here, is you're going to decide on whether to give us credit or continue on. Um, and I'm here as also, um, a landlord. We own a house in town. There's houses in town that, um, I'm so nervous, uh, that they're refusing to let them or getting it running, which I don't agree with. I feel that the landlords should have that fixed and get the tenants running water. And I just want to know as the city council what you guys are gonna do about it, because I know we're gonna have to continue to run water till at least April. And, um, I don't know if anybody else is gonna speak, but I'm concerned about this. And who's to say who's upset with the town and then just turns their water on? I mean, can you figure that out if their water, you know, if their pipes have been froze? Are they just gonna turn their water on to get credit, you know? I mean, there's that situation. There's, um, people can't afford to have their water fixed. They can't afford to get their pipes fixed. They can't afford to leave their water running. Um, and they can't leave right now. I can't either, so I, that's what I'm here to say. It's on our agenda a little later this evening. Is that for... Did I jump the gun here?
No, it's fine. It's fine.
We appreciate hearing you. All right, so, thank you.
Thank you. So we have David Creative Solutions regarding an update proposal for the city's website.
Good evening, everyone. And, uh, basically, uh, Creative Solutions has developed a website for the city five years back, it's two thousand nine. And currently, it looks like, uh, the way how things have progressed with the internet, uh, the code has, uh, been five years old and it's not functioning the way it should. There are certain things with upgrades, with new phones and, uh, tablets coming to the market, which were not at that point of time was not important. Uh, the current site does not work, or I should say, does not work very well with the existing phones and tablets. So this is what we propose, as to update the website and, uh, and make sure that the code and everything is compliant. With the updated site, uh, it'll be much more easier for the administrator of the website to make changes, update it frequently, and keep it more current. Uh, the cost is basi... The cost for it is a hundred dollars a month, uh, which is a little bit more than what currently is being paid. Uh, with this update, uh, we will make sure, Creative Solutions will make sure that the site remains updated with code as well as any other problems for the next three years, as long as the contract continues. Any questions on, on this?
How much have you been increasing? Just a hundred a month? Or what we are?
Uh, probably, we are with, uh, this is going to be around a thirty, thirty dollars increase, uh, a month.
We're paying forty-eight and some change. Yeah, it's about fifty dollars. Yeah. Well, visually, will it be any different from a computer?
It will be, uh, currently, the site, the way how site, the site looks is going to be different. Uh, the homepage will look completely different based on, uh, the inputs, uh, we've received. We can redo it. Uh, it will load faster on any browser, on any tablet, or any server.
Uh, city staff's ability to make changes, will that...
Uh, as of now, currently, there are few pages where the city's staff can modify the pages or add content to it. We'll make sure that all the pages will be able to, uh, the city, the city staff will be able to modify all the pages on it and make sure that it's updated frequently. So they won't have to send us an email saying there are certain changes that need to be done. They can do it whenever they need.
Yes, that's it.
Anything else?
The, um, the updates that you're referring to, that would be on this, uh, this three-year contract, what types of things would you be doing, of course? If we're gonna make modifications ourselves on some of the general input, what are the modifications that you would do?
The, the code of the, the code, basically, we're gonna make it compatible that it works with every single browser, uh, tablet, uh, and support all the upcoming changes that come up. For example, in the past, in the past few years, updates to Internet Explorer, Mozilla Firefox were not made that frequently. Now, if you look at it, the updates are much more frequent, uh, with the, with the, with the current version of the website and the way how, uh, it is con... The way how the contract is, it's painful, so there is no scope for making any changes to the code where the functionality would not be affected. At this point, we will make sure that the code behind the site will always function with whatever technology upgrades come in the market.
And this price includes hosting email?
Yes, the price includes hosting an email and the domain registration renewal. Existing emails will still be the same, uh, based on the current package, you can add more emails also.
How many email accounts are we allowed with current package?
I believe there are fifteen mail accounts, uh, that allow them currently.
That are allowed, okay. And any more would be additional cost?
Uh, I think with this upgrade, uh, you can get up to twenty-five email accounts. So anything above twenty-five would be extra cost.
About thirty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, so ten more.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just making sure I, I'm hearing this right then. So the increase basically is for the upgrade, and we'll pay for that for the next three years? Is that right?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. And your role in this will be to perform the upgrade, and then if there's any future upgrades, we'll do all the, the city will do their own?
Right. Updating the text, pictures, or information, content updating, the city will do the content updating. If they need any help, it'll obviously be available. There's a, uh, there's two hours of maintenance already included in that.
Okay.
Per what? Two hours per?
Per year.
Per year.
Do we know how many times this gets looked at? I mean, as far as somebody logged on and looked at it?
Uh, yeah, we do have, we can, uh, access those stats. I haven't looked at it recently, but I don't know if you guys have looked recently.
We use it a lot. I mean, because I forget things. I mean, I use it quite a bit, actually, and I do notice that on my, uh, because I have a little...
Tablet.
Tablet, thank you. And it doesn't load very fast sometimes. But I mean, it's not, I might get a little bit annoyed, but I just sit there, wait a minute, and then it's not anything that takes too long.
It does take a little bit longer on my cellphone, too.
Yes.
Plus, I mean, the way our navigation works right now, it doesn't load up correctly. So if you want to go to a particular link, it does not work very well with a navigator on, on cellphone.
And I use Firefox at home, and they average an upgrade about every, oh, six a year usually, or more. And each time that's upgraded, it does get a little slower to get to it.
Definitely. So all this will change, uh, with the new code changes on the website.
When will the improvements be made?
Uh, what we'll do is, once, uh, the proposal is accepted, uh, we'll sit down, uh, with any of the stakeholders and discuss what changes they want, because this is the time where, uh, we can go and update any or accommodate any inputs that we have to make any changes. Once we finalize on that, it could take around two to four weeks to get everything ready and...
Will we start paying the higher bill immediately?
Uh, no, actually, I think it's dated March first, whenever we sign it. I mean, that signing date would be dated when we start working on it.
Okay. Two hours doesn't seem like very much annual maintenance.
Uh, that's, that's a good, and actually, that's a good thing, I would say. Two hours is what we think of in terms of email issues, that there's something going down in email, and, uh, Robbie or any other staff needs help, that's where that two hours gets used. But as of now, the current website, the way things work, uh, there were certain updates that I needed to make, so that goes without doubt against it. And what we look forward as mostly...
And now they wouldn't be, you have to, with that, we can only get set to hours?
No, the, any, any other updates in terms of code updates, uh, that are additionally required, would go towards those two hours. Or any email requirements, or any email questions that you'll have, or any email changes that are required, will go, will go against that two hours. So for example, if someone buys a new phone, there's a new technology, emails have to be set up again on the phones or iPads on your new computer, that's where the time gets used for, for us to come and install it and make sure that everything starts working.
Do we know, since we've had it, if we went over, we've had two hours maintenance prior to this writing, currently? Have we went over there or, or do you know?
It's pretty close. We have never, I don't believe there's, uh, we have had, we have gone over it, uh, but I remember there were some updates to the van shell, and a few other, uh, things at that point in time we had used, used those two hours.
What do we use for analysis? Do you use Google Analytics?
With the new server, we'll be using Google Analytics. Uh, this is much more sophisticated than what, uh, the current version is for statistics.
And that's included in that?
Yes, that is included.
Now, a little bit, city will be, will be updating, so you'll have, like the van shell?
Yeah.
Come down. Right. Yeah. Most of the time, though, your timeless, uh, you did it from your office. You didn't have to come here.
Right, yeah. Mostly, everything is done through email, so whenever I receive an email for any changes, that's when, when we start to work, before the time goes on, and so that's the, that's the, that's the...
Well, excuse me if we're being a little bit thick here, but we're paying twice as much money, okay? And I'm still a little bit confused as to what's covered in the two hours and what's covered in the fifty dollars extra per month. That's, that's my...
That's a very nice question. Currently, the way how the contract was set up was, uh, there was a one-time fee for the website, and it was done. Now, what's the disadvantage of that is, once the money is paid, the hours of work are done, there's nothing that binds us to make the updates unless the city submit a new proposal for any new changes. Looking at technology and how things change frequently, it is always advisable to have a dedicated team making all the code updates or making the functionality of the website maintained, so the site performs. The site loads up correctly on any browser, any application, uh, that is what we're going to do. Previously, that was not the case. So whatever money was paid is already being used. So the fifty dollars more that we are currently, that we'll be paying, would be going towards building a new site. Would be, we'll be building, so there is nothing that we're going to keep, you're not going to use any existing code, because that code does not work, or that code won't be working. So we'll be creating new code, and that is what that fifty dollars is. The two hours for maintenance is if there is any other structural change that comes up. If, if the city decides that there's a new project and that new project needs to be added, so that two hours will accommodate that time. Or if there is something with the email, if there's a new employee, uh, his email needs to be set up on a phone, tablet, whatever time we spend setting that up will be counted towards those two hours.
Since we're gonna be signing a new contract, is that two hour, and I would kind of agree with the doubling of the increase, which I understand, um, is there any way to negotiate that maintenance, that two-hour maintenance? Can we, I'm just broke, you know, saying, can we have three hours maintenance instead?
I mean, there is, there shouldn't be any problem, uh, in that, I mean, it's not a hard value there, they're up to us, we won't do it against them. We have been working for a few years, so...
So let's say in a year and a half, we're halfway into this new contract, and there's a new technology tweak that needs to be made?
It will be made.
As part of this contract?
As part of this.
Okay.
On any future, uh, technology that comes on, uh, the new system is scored in a way that all new updates are performed on the server. So it will be a server-side update. The whole site is going to shift from a local platform to the cloud. So most of the changes that, that will be made, will be made to the site from the cloud infrastructure. Uh, and that's the reason why, that's a lot, that's the reason why you're based it as a monthly charge, so it just depends.
Okay. And I think you already addressed this, but just to clarify, in the previous contract, in years, five years that we've been, uh, working with you, how many times, how many years have we gone over the two hours of general maintenance?
I don't, I don't remember as of now, but I don't think, uh, that has been the case. Uh, the, I think, from what, I think, maybe, uh, maybe half an hour or an hour max, but that's just, and, and again, in some years, you have not used that half an hour, or it has never gone more than an hour. So I mean, it's just, it sometimes accumulates and then we use it for...
So carries over if it's not used from one year to the next?
We have been doing that so far.
Is it gonna continue to do that?
It will.
I like your idea, a couple more hours. I thank you for your verification.
And I, it's, I do, too, just because I have a concern with the techni... Like, you know, and I don't know a lot about, you know, I know technology changes all the time, but I just think that if we can negotiate a little extra maintenance on that, it might justify this.
Basically, the two hours are for things that we request.
Exactly.
Yeah. Ninety dollars is to keep us up to speed with what's on the outside world.
I was gonna say, perhaps we could, you could review what's been used in the past years, and we can come up like with an average, or we would be able to see what has been used for maintenance, and use that as a basis to decide, like, how many hours would be good for the future?
Yes, that, that sounds like a good idea.
What's, if, if we go over the two hours, what's the hourly rate?
I suppose a hundred dollars an hour.
One hundred?
Got a question, according to the emails. With the police department, it's getting to the point where any pla... Any place that we go and do emails with, we need to have secure email. I understand you're talking about that there would be twenty-five email addresses that the city could use. Does that cost us to have all twenty-five of those put on there, or is that, does that come with this package? Because you had talked about the two hours, and setting up an email would be part of that two hours. Is that true? Do you want me to clarify that?
Initially, once you go over that twenty-five emails?
Over the twenty-five.
Over the twenty-five emails.
Okay.
And, and for secure emails, there's a distinction between regular email and secure email. When you say secure, the current emails that we have are not secure in terms of they are not HIPAA compliant, or they're, they're not any other compliance-driven emails. That would be an extra charge.
So would they be more secure than what Gmail, Yahoo, and whatever would be?
The current ones that we offer? Yes, definitely, yes. There won't be any, I mean, after all, spam is something that we cannot control, depending on where you list your email, but it's going to be much more better than any of those unpaid options on there.
Thank you.
And you have something? Anything else? I guess I'd be looking for a motion. What you wanted to say?
Jim, did you intend, um, have this tabled? When, is he getting information that they, that they need to know before they, makes a decision tonight, or is that something you, that he would just get after the fact? I didn't know what you meant.
Oh, we can do it after the fact. I don't think you, we, you've exceeded any of the maintenance in the past years.
I don't think so either, but I don't know.
And if you have, if you have, we have, it hasn't been built, and it won't be.
Yeah, it, it hasn't been a problem in the past, but...
In fact, they have the maintenance, I think, is, yeah, is not a real, a real, or shouldn't, I don't think, be a big concern. Unless, of course, you have come up with some other big, huge project, then that would actually be probably quoted separately and not really dealt with maintenance.
I make a motion that we accept the website services' sales agreement for the three-year contract. As it stands.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I'm going to abstain on this one, since I worked there.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Ora.
Thank you.
Consideration of approval of the appointment of Nathan Suebert to serve on the Hampton Public Library Board of Trustees, term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
I would move reapprove Nathan Suebert to be appointed to the Hampton Public Library Board of Trustees, term expiring June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Steve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of approval of new liquor licensing for Willie's Sports Bar, ten First Street Northwest, near the...
Yeah, I don't have any comments unless, well, there, that's why we're not saying anything, but, uh, if everything's ready to go.
Move to approve liquor licensing.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Val. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion back.
Thanks for coming.
Approval claims is submitted by staff. Claims are in amount of one hundred two thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Any motion?
I move reapprove the claims.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Val, to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of approval and adoption of the resolutions, ordinances, resolution two zero one four dash zero three. Resolution authorizing application for Clean Water SRF Water Restoration Sponsored Project.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero three, resolution authorizing application for Clean Water SRF Water Restoration Sponsored Project. Whereas during the two thousand nine Iowa General Assembly Session, legislation was passed to allow additional water quality protection projects called Water Resource Restoration Sponsored Projects, which include locally-directed watershed-based projects to address water quality problems within the area in which a publicly-owned wastewater utility is located. Whereas the city of Hampton desires to participate in the SRF Water Resource Restoration Sponsored Project Program, improve the water quality through projects and best practices, which will lead to reduced contamination, sediment, and waste deposits in local tributaries such as Squaw Creek and Spring Creek. And whereas the city of Hampton will utilize the services of Yegi Colby Associates to prepare an application complying with the established criteria. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Hampton, Iowa, that application to the Clean Water SRF Water Resource Restoration Sponsored Project Program is authorized and direct staff, in collaboration with Yegi Colby Associates, to submit said application upon completion. And then you have a copy in your packet of, uh, draft, um, that was as of a couple days ago, it's got a little more written, and it will be, but that's the basis of it. And once we get signatures, uh, resolution, that will be included in that as well. And, uh, probably meet with Yegi Colby tomorrow, and we'll get that in the mail and, uh, submit it tomorrow. The deadline is, uh...
The deadline is Monday, so. Any questions on that? I think you're here.
I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the document, two thousand fourteen dash zero three.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Dick, second by Jim. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Hickman?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Collie, aye.
Arms.
Aye.
Lucas Meyer?
Aye.
Bob Beck?
Aye.
And then passes. Resolution, two zero one four dash zero six, resolution approving the temporary water sewer adjustments due to inclement weather causing freezing of water service lines.
Okay, I'll read the resolution that's being proposed, and then I'll go over this sheet here, which kind of gives information as to how the process would work. Resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero six, a resolution approving temporary water sewer adjustments due to inclement weather causing freezing of service lines. Whereas the community of Hampton has been experiencing an unusually extreme cold weather winter pattern that has caused many water service lines to freeze, and the Hampton City Council recognizes the burden this has caused many property owners. And whereas numerous requests have been made to the Hampton City Council for the consideration of a consumption adjustment to their water bill. And whereas the Hampton City Council has listened to the public input and seeks to offer water bill adjustment to those members of the public who have found it necessary to run water continuously to avoid frozen water lines. Whereas the Hampton City Council directs city staff to make adjustments calculated using the prior three months' average usage, and only be available to those customers who have excess usage and have contacted City Hall to request the adjustment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hampton City Council approves the implementation of a temporary water sewer bill adjustment effective for the April first, two thousand fourteen billing, and directs staff to cease adjustments at the conclusion of the excess usage periods as determined by city staff. Customers who have been running water to prevent service lines from freezing will need to register their name and address at City Hall. An adjustment would be made on the April first water sewer bill by averaging that customer's November, December, and January usage. Customers who do not register will not be considered for any compensation. Customers may stop at City Hall or call four five six, forty five three during regular office hours. City Hall office hours are Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. That's, this is the proposal that after visiting with staff, you know, I, at the workshop I talked about, if the council, it seemed the council consensus was to move forward with an adjustment, and I recommended at the time that we, if we do approve something like that, that we do something that staff isn't going to take a lot of staff time and be overburdened some, something that's simple to apply. And so, this is what we've worked out for your consideration, but of course, it's up for discussion, so, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Like you, the example, one example you gave for those that are running water, would this also apply to, let's say, I had a neighbor that did not have water, and they borrowed and used a lot of my water, even though, let's say, I wasn't running the water? In other words, you wouldn't have to be running the water, but anyone that had excess water usage because they're helping someone else could also call in?
That's right. That's what we intended.
Yeah, I would hope so. And then I have a related question. I was contacted by someone that said they're renting, and the land, their apartment that they're renting from, the water froze up, but the landlord was not going to do anything about it, no.
Yeah, that sounds like something Lisa mentioned to me, and it's something I need to look into.
I recommended that they call you, that the renter call you. My thought would be, since we have the apartment, you know, the landlord inspection, that they should be required to do something about it and not just leave that poor renter.
Not the quality of life issue that should be addressed.
Right, but that has come up, so I wanted to bring that up. That's not necessarily covered by this resolution, but it's related to, it's a problem related to the freezing water.
I thought Lisa brought up several good points, and I have a question in regard to what you just said. Lisa, were you referring to some situations where the landlords told them not to run the water?
No, they just weren't going to fix it. They just flat-out told them that they wouldn't fix it, and so, I don't agree with that. They, as a landlord, you should.
That's their responsibility.
It is responsibility to their tenants.
Same situation, I don't know if it's the same person, but I agree with you, Lisa. I mean, I think the landlord should be required, or somehow, they can't just leave that renter like that at all.
You know, and how far back are you going to go? Three months, or, I mean, I should have brought that up earlier, but are you going to table this tonight? Are you going to discuss it any further? I don't know, I know there's still like ten people without water out there, so how are they supposed to get their pipes fixed? There's wells that are dried up, I mean, so, I don't know. That's why I'm here.
One of the points that you brought up, I agree with very much. Whatever we put in place, I don't feel that it should be an open door for somebody just to turn the faucets on and let them run. So, I think that we're faced with a situation where we need to establish some maximums as far as the amount of credit that we, the creditor would give.
Yeah, how do you determine the maximum?
I don't know, I'm not sure we can come to a resolution of this tonight. We might have to table it.
I think I can make a motion now to approve the doc, resolution two thousand fourteen dash six, because we've got people that are hurting right now. It's a problem, and it needs to be addressed.
Oh, I agree with you a hundred percent.
As far as analyzing, you can overanalyze anything, okay? And I think there's a lot of communities have already went forward, and you can ask, or even after you've done this, you can change or adapt and do different things, but this needs to be done first.
And today I was speaking with somebody that, his husband, a friend of mine, his husband works for the Mason City Water Department, and they have an area that they, you know, they're kind of going back and forth, kind of like we are. They're telling them not to run their water, they're supposed to run their water, but they're not sure what to do. Well, I was very sure they had a main freeze, and it's, um.
See, a lot of that, they're talking about Zasbury Park up there, for instance. They use, they have septic tanks at various homes, and they don't want to run the water into the septic tank.
Now, should, because, you know, like I told you before, I'm ignorant to this. Should everyone be, I mean, would it be beneficial if everyone was running their water? Or just certain areas?
I know it's very important in the southwest area, because that has, your water lines are as deep as they are in other areas. But I've also heard of people up in the northeast part of town where we've got brand-new mains that are having problems.
I think it's important to measure the temperature of your water. That should be the determining factor of whether you should be running water.
When I left, I checked mine before I left him, it was forty-two degrees, so it's.
Well, if you're using water on an ongoing basis during the course of the day, there isn't any reason to let the water run that. I think this is a good opportunity for us to work as a community together and use common sense and conserve water in any way that we can. But we don't want water freezing up, we know that. Another thing that I wanted to address was, I got a call from a gentleman who's not in town now, but was concerned because the person that he contracted to hook up a welder to free his water up told him that the city said he couldn't do that. And that's not true, we're not telling anybody with welder they can't do it. We've just had one house that had a fire because a neighbor was hooked up to get their water going. So, the better alternative that we offered is some of the jetting that we talked about the other night. There are several companies that are doing water jetting, either with hot water or pressure, and that's the safer way to do that without causing a problem down the road.
Our temperature in South Carolina was only forty-four degrees. It's hovering forty-two. Ours has been reading fifty, and we still close up. Sunday morning, I got up, and we had breakfast at six in the morning, and we had water. I got up from the table to do the dishes, and we had no water. And, and we continue to take the temperature on, I'm going to make the monitor, and it reads fifty, but ours still closed.
How long are you letting it run to get that reading? How many minutes?
Well, we've been running it since he put it on.
Oh, so it's a continuous stream? Okay.
Pencil size.
So, it's coming from the main at fifty degrees, probably? In your part, it varies in neighborhoods.
So, my concern would be, next year, we have the same thing. When would a citizen know when to start doing that? Because I had it that morning, and we had breakfast, and six, I got up and no water. When would you?
Well, I think it depends on the winter that we have next year. How much snow cover is on the ground?
How deep the frost.
Yeah, how deep the frost is, the length of cold snaps that we have? Do we have warm days in between, and so, it's hard to say.
Or putting out notices on radios, you know, for the citizens to start watching.
Yeah, I think that this will be in our memory for next year, for sure, and probably a couple of years. But I think if it doesn't happen for a few years, it's going to leave the memory of people. But that's one of the reasons that we are keeping a list of everybody who had frozen lines, because in five years or ten years, if this happens again, we're going to proactively contact people and tell them to start measuring the temperature, so.
One more question, so, to make the record clear, there was not an issue by the city that you could not get a welder or anybody to unfreeze your line? Is that true?
Well, we told, we did not, we don't endorse that practice, but we don't outlaw it. They can do it, but, but they can't, we don't let them hook up to the fire hydrant. They can hook up their welder to the inside and then to the curb stop, because that's owned by the property owner. But we're asking them not to hook up to fire hydrants, because they can't control where the current's going from that point on.
Thank you.
I think in the case where we did have a fire, it was a house across the street, and a couple of houses down.
He did, yeah. Well, he was doing it, yep.
And Richard is a electrician, so he.
We're still having, we haven't had electrical problems from that night. However, our brother is working power. That's the only thing in our house, you know, the water hole that's got a little bit of paint to it now.
You got your water back after over two weeks?
Thirteen months.
I guess the only comment I would make is, the city still is incurring expense with this. I'm leaning towards Dick's comment of putting a cap on this, or running a percentage of the amount that they're owed, maybe a percentage that the customer pays and the city, and the city will absorb part of that? Because there still is an expense involved to the city, and that is to the taxpayer's account. So, even if they're not using it.
It's all taxpayer money to be in with then.
I just think maybe we need to think about that.
I did talk with a couple of the folks that were here on Monday night and asking about that as far as, you know, were they expecting a hundred percent over their previous usage? And neither one of them were. That's, I think we would open ourselves up to maybe some unnecessary expense if we just had an open check. That's my only concern. I want to help everybody that's having a problem. I think we're doing that information-wise and being available. But I think we need to have some sort of a check as far as, no open check.
Or is the volume?
Do you think if there's thirty people in the same neighborhood or similar, if one guy's water bill is three times more than it was in his average, and everyone else is two times more or one, then you can kind of see that maybe somebody's, you can look at the water bills, because their averages are going to be the same, ours is. Every month, it's the same. And if you have, because as far as somebody just wasting water, cranking it up just to stick it to the man, I don't know that that's going to happen, because one of these guys, these people are all going to register. And when you get, when everybody gets your water bill, and three people are way more than everyone else, you know, that's kind of, you could maybe, but as far as, you can't, if somebody's water needs a little bigger than a pencil to not freeze, and they got to make a little bigger than a pencil, so they may use more water. I think it's just a matter of, we need to get through this winter, and, because every, twice a year, they clean the mains, and they don't, they turn the hydrants on for a half hour, and there's thousands, so it's not like the water is going anywhere. I think the sewer part of the bill is the bigger part.
Well, you've got your treating the water, you have the penalties caused, and, you know, where, go with your sewer.
We're still treating it, you're up to the.
And a lot of communities are just doing a certain gallons, it's all been there. A lot of communities aren't doing anything.
I'm, you know, I'm kind of with Steve, you know. We could sit here and we could argue, I mean, not argue, we could analyze this over and over. I consider it a natural disaster, and the only difference is between this and the tornado, besides the catastrophe, I don't mean that, is the time. We have time to sit here and discuss it. Now, if this was something that just happened, and it happened to everybody, we wouldn't have that time. We'd have to make a decision right now. I'm with Steve, I think, you know, if there's some, if there's a few people out there that are going to run water just to run water, I'm disappointed, but there's nothing I can do about that.
I have a hard time believing there are community though.
I do too, the sound drives me crazy, I have to run mine. And I hear it, and all I hear is waste, 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 you know, but I know it has to run.
And my wife, she's constantly, it drives her crazy, and she constantly reaches over and says, wait a minute, you know, but, the way it is.
I have a point of clarification, Ron. You know, it says here we make an adjustment calculated using prior three months. Now, it doesn't say exactly what the adjustment is. So, I guess, is this, passing this resolution in general, could we take a look at this first round of numbers and just sort of see where they're at, and then maybe decide whether it's a hundred percent over the average? Because we haven't specified that, so.
In this paragraph here, it talks about make adjustments calculated using the prior three months' average usage.
We said making an adjustment, but it's not saying like it has to be above, like anything above that average. We're making an adjustment, and so, can we be specific once we see the first round of numbers and decide?
Sure.
Rather than, because we don't have the exact mathematical formula. I mean, it's more of a concept, yes, we're going to make an adjustment based on the three months' average. Now, what that actual adjustment is.
Depends on the average.
We haven't set.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying, should, I mean, we're going to make an adjustment, but can we look at the numbers and then decide whether, if some are way high? You know, we have to be consistent, but I think it might be good to actually see some numbers first before we.
Okay, but when we see the numbers, we're sending out bills, so it's too late to make the adjustment.
Assuming you send out the bills, or we don't, we can't see them before the bills are sent out.
Yeah, that would be difficult to have a council meeting, and I, I don't know that that would work.
Well, I just threw that out as, because I'm hearing two different things here.
Yeah.
And there isn't anything specific in the resolution that says the exact formula.
What this is saying is that, let's take one bill, for instance, they have six. Their average usage, and we would look at their November, December, January, and it averaged six thousand gallons. And if they, in the March reading, it was twelve thousand, then we would back it down to six thousand gallons. With their average, we would, yeah. That would be the adjustment to back whatever they, the average of what they paid in November, December, January. But, so it would be an adjustment to each property, whatever their average was for those three months, and then this property, whatever their average was for those three months. Because some, it's an elderly person in this house, and she's going to have a lower average, and a family with six kids in this house, doing a lot of laundry. It's going to vary in that respect.
Well, the extra water that's being used should be just that pencil string. It has no bearing on the more loads of wash, whatever, it's that pencil string.
Well, you're doing that as arriving at the average by looking at whatever wash it is. It's just what water they use, and how much extra they had to use to run that pencil string. And I think at this point, I'd just make the motion and vote it, yes or no.
And one more comment I just would like to make, I would hope that the community would just be grateful for any type of adjustment that we decided on making. I know I will be.
Yeah, me too.
So does that mean if we approve this, we can't change their mind or we can make an adjustment later? Can the next, discuss it again the next workshop?
Okay, well, if this gets approved, then this will be the way it will be done until you change it, if you change it again. If you, if we put it on another, the next council agenda and it gets changed, then we...
We could, we have to pass another resolution and will have, will we have to pass another resolution regardless to put an end to it? Cause we don't have an ending date on it, or did you say?
I put in here that, uh, direct city staff to cease the adjustments at the conclusion of the excess usage periods as determined by city staff.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
So, when, when do people have to, does it, it sounds like there are people who are two or three weeks in doing this already, so when would you register? When are we?
Well, okay, since the workshop, it was on the radio of what, what the consensus was, and so we've had people calling in, um, to get their name on the list, and, and they know it's not official until you take action. But, I, I guess I wanted, I wanted to bring up this, we had meter readings, uh, last week or a week and a half ago, and the bills got printed today and they'll be going out in the mail on the first. Now, uh, there's gonna be some increased usage on those that were running their water in the last couple of weeks. Uh, so they're gonna, they won't get an adjustment on that. Whoever has been running their water and it was, you know, through a week and a half ago when it was read, they're gonna pay more because this isn't gonna catch that group, that first wave. This will be for the reading that is done in the, the middle of March for the April first billing. And that will catch most of what the excess is, but there's gonna be some that are gonna see a higher bill when they get it first next week.
And again, I, I just wanna reiterate, I think that that just, I, we are doing something, you know, and I, I can see that, you know, that there's nothing we can do for the bill that's going on now, but at least we're making an attempt to help in future.
Okay, so I guess I'm looking for a motion of some kind?
I'm hoping we approve and adopt a resolution.
Motion by Steve, second by Val. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Hickman?
Can we open up, um, the floor to the public?
We got a motion, we need to press, right?
In this, in this discussion period, is that within three, we haven't given anybody a chance to have their input.
It's discussion time before the roll call vote, yes?
I guess I would, I would like to receive any input from you folks out there.
I've been watching other cities too and they're pretty much doing what you guys are, are proposing tonight and it's taken a pretty much, really much time. And some cities are actually looking, if they don't get a strength on until the middle of April, they were actually gonna possibly extend it for interest expenses or something. But, basically, it's what you guys are doing tonight is what other communities are doing too.
And I think there's a lot of variance in what communities are doing actually. My biggest concern was, uh, maybe a cap, that was my biggest concern, a couple of that.
I think it's pretty gracious of the council to even consider something like this. The city is only responsible for the mains in the town, nothing from the main to the house. So, you're really not obligated to do anything. So I think anything that you do should be appreciated by the, by the consumers out here. And, uh, I, I think your average works out pretty good. I'd suggest do it this year and if something needs to be changed, because there's a little time, a flywheel effect here, because the next bill isn't gonna be going out for another month. We don't know when that frost is actually gonna start coming up. So you've got a little basis for next year as to kinda what you're doing. But I think, I think they've done a fine job.
I, I agree with, can I agree with you?
Yeah. And I also appreciate what you guys are even considering. Um, it's awesome, so...
I think, Ron, you can suggest in how to go about solving problems, very good. That's a good procedure to follow so far from what we can see.
And it is just a one, one adjustment, one-time adjustment, like in May, that will cease, right? You're putting a cap on it out of three, out of the three months.
I guess the intent is that when people stop having to run their water after that reading, so it could be after the April reading, March reading and April reading.
And if you've already called in and told them, do you, you, we don't have to do anything further?
Calling once, calling once.
Okay. Just thank you for even considering what you're doing.
No, our names are on the list. Do we need to call again to apply for this now?
If you've already called in.
You just answered it.
No.
If they already called in, you were without, cause I talked to Doug, the O B P.
And if, if, if you, you can always call in just to make sure you're on the list, that, that's fine.
To recover.
Yeah.
It's definitely hard to, with your water.
But it's mother nature.
Yep.
We would not be obligating ourselves to future years by doing this.
This is, it's, I use the word temporary for that intent, to let everyone know this is temporary.
Anyone else? Okay, Hickman?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Crowley?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Luthensmire?
Aye.
Augback?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero four, resolution endorsing the application by the City of Hampton for grant funding from the Iowa Department of Transportation's Traffic Safety Improvement Program for replacement of traffic signal devices and car stances.
Yeah, and, and we talked about it at the workshop. Doug is, uh, is, uh, putting together this application, this grant application for replacement of the street traffic signals at the intersection of Highway three and First Street and Highway three and sixty-five, um, because this grant that we're applying for, we could be eligible for a hundred percent funding for full replacement of those. So, we're, you know, council is again that they want us to go for that, so we're gonna go for that. Now, if we don't get the grant, there's no guarantee that we're going to replace those, so this is, so anyway, this is the first step in applying for the grant is we need a council resolution authorizing it. Whereas the Hampton City Council recognizes importance of traffic safety measures within the city limits of Hampton, and whereas the existing traffic control devices located at the intersections of Highway three, First Street West and Highway three and Highway sixty-five are either currently or prone to malfunction due to the age of the equipment exceeding projected longevity, with replacement vital parts for proper function no longer available, and whereas the Hampton City Council desires to replace these traffic control devices with new and properly functioning devices, or which replacement parts are readily available if needed, in an effort to provide safe and efficient traffic flow for local through and pedestrian traffic at these locations, and whereas the investment in the purchase and installation of such equipment is cost prohibitive to the city's current budget and limited revenue resources, and whereas with adequate grant funding to the City of Hampton for this proposed upgrade would allow prompt action for this valuable public safety improvement, and whereas the City of Hampton assures the commitment to adequately maintain proper function of said new traffic control devices upon installation. How therefore be it resolved that the Hampton City Council approves and adopts Resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero four for the authorization of application for grant funding from the Iowa Department of Transportation's Traffic Safety Improvement Program, T C I, for the replacement of two, of these two sets of traffic control devices? Thank you.
Do I remember right, this is due in August?
Yes.
When do they announce?
I don't know.
So we don't, wouldn't know anything right here.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to approve? Move to approve Resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero four.
Second.
Motion by Val, second by Steve. Any further discussion? Full co-vote, uh, Crowley?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Hickman?
Aye.
Luthensmire?
Aye.
Augback?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Ordinance number three four six, final reading, and ordinance amending chapter one sixty-five, article eleven, arterial transitional AT zoning district by adding new subsection four point three, multi-family dwellings thereto. Do we need a final reading of the ordinance, anyone?
I move we approve and adopt ordinance number three four six.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Steve. Crowley?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Luthensmire?
Aye.
Augback?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Hickman?
Aye.
Ordinance number three four seven, final reading, and ordinance amending section four, article twelve, light industrial zoning district I one, chapter one sixty-five, Hampton Code as section four, article thirteen, heavy industrial zoning district I two, chapter one sixty-five, Hampton Code allowing firearm manufacturing as a condition for limited use. Does anyone need a final reading of that? Luthens, for motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Motion by Steve, second?
Second.
Harms?
Aye.
Hickman?
Aye.
Augback?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Luthensmire?
Aye.
Crowley?
Aye.
Ordinance number three forty-eight, final reading, and ordinance amending section three E of article twelve, light industrial zoning district I one, and section three D of article thirteen, heavy industrial zoning district I two, chapter one sixty-five, removing the words gunpowder from prohibited industrial uses Hampton municipal code. Any final reading? Need a motion?
I move to approve and adopt, uh, three four eight, twenty-three, four eighteen.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, second by Jim. Hickman?
Crowley? Aye.
Luthensmire?
Aye.
Augback?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Ordinance number three forty-nine, final reading, and ordinance amending section six, article twelve, light industrial zoning district I one, chapter one sixty-five, Hampton municipal code, and section six, article thirteen, heavy industrial zoning district I two, chapter one sixty-five, Hampton municipal code to approve ammunition manufacturing as a conditional use. Anyone need that one? You need a motion?
Move to approve and adopt ordinance number three four nine.
Second.
Motion by Val, second by Steve to approve. Luthensmire?
Aye.
Hickman?
Aye.
Crowley?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Augback?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Approve the previous minutes as drafted from the Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand fourteen regular session meeting. Schedule the next special session on Monday, March tenth, two thousand fourteen, at six o'clock P M. at City Council Chambers for public hearing and adoption of fiscal year fifteen budget. Schedule the next regular session for Thursday, March thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, at six P M. at City Council Chambers. Need a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second? Is that finished? Motion by Jim, second by Val. All those in board, Dave, say aye.
Aye.
The votes? Staff reports. Kent Luthens, he's up here. Police Chief Shaker.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Um, continue with the nuisance citations, uh, not citations, but letters. Um, there are several that we have, uh, done, uh, this month. We had ten nuisance C R's and we have six are closed and four are open. Um, and they seem to be complying even though that, uh, they waited a little bit and have snow covering it, but, uh, um, most of it is garbage, uh, related, uh, more so than junk or whatever, but, um, they're getting taken care of. Also, I wanna just remind the public of the scams that are out there. Uh, we did have somebody come in here, uh, since the last time we had the meeting, that, uh, had gotten a call from their, nephew, um, basically saying that they'd been vacationing in Mexico and were in the taxi and had gotten pulled over and they had drugs in the car and they were in jail and needed a thousand dollars in order to get out. And, uh, fortunately, they came up to the police department, asked about it, and, uh, we got things squared away and, and nobody lost any money. But just so that you know that they're out there. The other thing is, is just to remind you that these sweepstakes or whatever, if anybody, if you need to give somebody money to give money, it's a scam. So, just kinda try to keep that in mind. Other than that, uh, that's about it. I do wanna tell, um, give the street guys and Doug kudos for the streets that we have. I know that we have citizens likely complain about them, but they don't need to go very far, just drive down to Waterloo and, uh, see what's up in the streets or right down there and, and, uh, you will really appreciate what we have. So, thank you.
Does LT need to run?
Nothing unless it's bad.
Counsel report, Diane Crowley, I have nothing. Jay?
Just had a, somebody that thought, uh, Paul could get closer to his mailbox.
Steve?
No.
No, nothing? Dude?
I've got about a half an hour, yes. Um, I do, I wanna thank everybody who's been involved with helping their neighbors, the Churchill Building, again, um, and the Fitness Center for helping with this water problem. It's a chance for us to come together as a community, help each other out, so look out for your neighbor, that your neighbor will help you the next time.
I've actually, you know, had people talk to me about the streets and complimenting, you know, the, how, well, the street department's done, so I wanna pass that on. And, uh, Young Performing Artists Concert fundraiser for Arts Council is Saturday, March eighth, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. You'll get tickets at Center One. And then I do wanna just mention again that I hope the staff will, will, and will look into the issue that landlords or a landlord may not be, um, taking care of a frozen life problem. Again, I encourage that person to call in, so hopefully they did, so you'd know who it was. Thanks.
Mayor's down, so he doesn't have any words. So I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion by Steve, second?
Second.